Board meeting for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I would ask you all to stand, and we have a special guest this evening. I would ask a member of the Monroe County Legislature, not judge, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with all my attention, under the power and with the discipline of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Our first quarter of business this evening is we have a proclamation this afternoon, or actually just an hour ago, we rededicated, I guess you might say, the Adnestruck Memorial Park on Lapham. And this evening, we have a proclamation because it is Historic Preservation Month. So I will go to the podium, and if the members of the Historic Preservation Commission are here, they can come up as well. And I would like to, at this time, read the proclamation, Historic Preservation Month proclamation. Whereas the historic preservation is an effective tool for managing the growth and sustainable development revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing visibility, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Whereas in two thousand and twenty-four, it is being celebrated as people-saving places, highlighting people who have made contributions toward historic preservation in their communities. So be it resolved that I, Darryl Byers, Mayor of the Village of Webster, the Webster Village Board of Trustees, do recognize May two thousand and twenty-four as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Village of Webster to recognize and participate in this special observance. I would like to just recognize you guys all. This will be put up for the month and for the years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forward to the month. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Floor is now open. If you wish to address the board, state your name and issues you'd like to work before us.
My name is Bruce Winters. I live on Dunning Avenue, and I'm not here tonight to talk about the evils of our marijuana program in the state. Instead, I want to just take a moment to thank you guys who are on the board and other volunteers throughout the village, like Lynn with the museum and the history, for your dedication to the village. I want to compliment you on doing this. You don't, I know you're not getting rich off this job, and it takes people, special people, like you makes a village tick. I grew up in a small town in northern New York. My father was a village trustee for about a dozen years, and I know that very often it was not a, it was often, I should say, a thankless job, stressful at times, and it did take personal commitment and personal time. And I just want to thank you guys for what you do. There are some of us out here, although we may get up at times and browse about things, we do appreciate what you do, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and I, why haven't you anyone? I live, do I have to tell my address?
Yes.
Okay. I live eighteen sixty-one Ridgero in Webster, and it's such an honor and privilege for me to be here. Our town board got dismissed early, so I'm honored to be here to support. And as a liaison for the museum, I'm so happy and proud, and you know, for dedication, and I deeply am sorry that I missed the dedication, the rededication today. But again, you know, history, we have to reserve it for the future of our generation, and so therefore, what an honor for me to be a liaison for the museum and to see that, to reserve the history so we can go forward in our future. Congratulations again, everyone, and thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Matt, then I will close that portion of our meeting, and we will then move to regular board business. Before we do that, I guess I would ask, just to remind everybody of the hours that the museum are open during the week so that the public can come in. Or, if I could ask if you would remind us?
Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday afternoons from two to four-thirty. And if you want to see the historian, I'm usually in Mondays and Thursday mornings and other times, but call and make an appointment.
If that did not go over the air, I would reiterate Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays, two to four-thirty, that the museum is open, and I would encourage as many of you that are listening, whether you've been there or not, to go and see the things that are part of the history here of the village in Webster. Yes, Peter?
Just a quick note, too, when you do come to the museum, I've been honored to be a greeter now since like two thousand and seventeen or sixteen, and it's great to be on the museum board as well. But when you come to the museum, you'll have a greeter there who will help you through and explain some, many of the items that are there if you have any questions. So you don't just come into the museum and look around, you also have somebody that will help you right when you're there. So it's a really great experience for that, too. So if you want to know what a stereoscope is, we all know what they are, so we'll help you with that, okay?
And for anybody that's not familiar, that's eighteen Lapham Park.
Eighteen Lapham Park, correct. That's true. Turn off of East Main on Lapham Park, and just down maybe, what, hundred feet, two-hundred feet on your left, you'll find parking for the Webster Museum. All right, we will move now to our business, and the first write-up is approval of minutes from April twenty-five. Have them in front of you, look them over, I think corrections, if there were any of them made. Looking it over, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Valpine.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have list of our bills, clear and ones, and we barely had a chance to look those over, or was L?
Pretty amazing.
Anyone else who should look them over? Any questions that you'd like to have?
I don't have any questions.
No.
I look, yes, I didn't have any issues.
No nuts involved?
Nope, everything's just fallen off.
I guess one of the biggest items, and that's good, is payment for the, for our Freightliner Street sweeper, which
Yep.
All the village will be seeing that going around the neighborhood. All right, questions then, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Valpine.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, I would ask for a resolution here, present a resolution to authorize myself, the mayor, to accept and sign the release for property damage agreement with J.B. Hunt for the damage to a street pole in the amount of four thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. I hope everybody
Where does that end?
Not in favor of that.
It's four East, or four East Main Street across from Jeff's Computers and Mayor Smith.
So this summer, right?
No, this was, I think, last April, maybe, or was it? No, you're right, it was this over July.
Yep.
And that's the full amount for a place that are fixed.
Okay. I'll make the motion. One second.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Valpine.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have a group resolution to authorize the village clerk to update section five of the policy manual to add a section entitled five oh dash oh eight, quote, fund allowance policy. You have that in front of you, I believe that the reason for this is that it's something that was a little bit more significant or substantial, specific in terms of different fund allowances.
So we don't, if we don't create one of these classes in place, we don't. So this was to create one, put one in place for us, so we can start, I'd like to start moving some of our unreserved money to reserves.
Do you know, do you have any particular questions regarding the policy?
I think it's a good thing. I'll make a motion.
L, make a motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Valpine.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye, Heather.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution to authorize the superintendent of Public Works to hire two seasonal workers for the Department of Public Works at sixteen dollars an hour. I believe that what we had agreed to or had before us for the one previously was for the sewer department, and these are two seasons now for, actually, some have worked with the public works. I guess they are yet to be named.
Yes.
But we'll authorize them and
Okay.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Valpine.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
And last, we have a resolution to authorize the village board to accept the low bids for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project as follows. To award contract number one, general construction to Crane Hogan at a base bid of eight million sixty-nine thousand sixty dollars, and accept one million seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollar alternates, one through four, declining alternate five, for a total of nine million eight hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Secondly, to award contract number two, electrical construction, to Concord Electric Corporation at a base bid of one million three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, and accept seventy thousand four hundred dollars alternates, one through five, for a total of one million four hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. Third, to award contract number three, HVAC construction, to John W. Danforth Company at a base bid of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, and accept thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars alternate one, for a total of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. And finally, to award contract number four, plumbing and construction, to Michael A. Ferruglio Plumbing and Heating Incorporated at a base bid of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and accept five hundred and seventeen thousand dollar alternates, one through four, for a total of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. These are now bids that we are offering, and low bids, we have gone through the thirty days and
How many bids, how many bids, how many bids for each of these kids?
It varied, and some had four or five, and one of them had two, I believe, is a twelve and a half of those bids. But then, because of the project, they had to bid out four separate contracts, or they had to separate out the, the general and plumbing electrical and HVAC, all separate contracts.
Any of these minority women?
There's a component because of working with the, see, there's a component of requirements for NBB in each of the contracts, perfectly.
There was Beachworth preliminaries. So the resolution before you was to authorize the, that would be the board to accept. Is that correct, Ellen?
Yes. Don, does that, does that mean what I typed on the agenda?
Yeah, Jake did an actual resolution.
I know, he just likes to read from the agenda, so I just wanted to make sure. Sorry.
Oh, yeah. Pretty much say the same thing.
Yes. But what Jake, we need what Jake did, not the agenda, but, thank you.
So I can ask you for a motion?
I am asking for a motion.
I'll make that one. One second.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Valpine.
Aye.
And a trusty Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, we are now going to officially begin moving on this, correct? It's exciting.
Correct the agenda narrative from Sunday, notice to proceed, or they notice of award tomorrow.
Okay. Now we are ready to move on. And first, I'll ask, Don, do you have anything that you would like to?
Nothing really, legally speaking.
How about you legally?
No, legally.
Everything okay?
Everything is fine. You know, there were some things, you know, but Darryl, if he wants to speak to them, you know, we had a meeting about the wellfields, and, you know, if you want to update the board on that and
I don't know if there was that much that came out of it. There are, obviously, we're still being held under, you want to call it that, what was put in place, that overlay district, that was put in place a while ago. We had a discussion regarding consolidation of properties. That is a, probably a major concern down there because the parcels that were put in place on those paper streets, certainly not all of them are spoken, excuse me, spoken for, or are someone's property. But there are several that are significant that have been bought recently, I guess you'd say. And the question is, how can we consolidate those Monroe County and the properties that they have? They have moved, all of them kind of traded them off, so that they are to the east of the line, if you want to call it that, there. So they haven't, they moved out of the scattering that was in place before. But there are still some private individuals, I believe that there are ten, Jake?
Yes.
Private individuals that own one or more, little, less than fifty, three, I think.
I believe they're about fifty by a hundred.
Fifty by a hundred, a very small
Kind of a single unit lets.
Yep. So that was a major point of discussion, how do we consolidate some of those properties so that there is a more of an open space that can be used, and finally, we decide what it can be used for. Monroe County, at this point, has said that they would not be interested in any kind of purchase for pipeline. However, it probably could be done at maybe town level, but not at the town level at this point.
Matt Chadfield was going to approach the town board, and to try to gauge the town's interest in perhaps having a town park on the village property.
So that's where that stands at the moment. Okay, then we'll move on to the Department of Public Works. Jake?
Just a few things, want to thank the staff crew down there, well, not all of the DBW, but out of the wastewater treatment plant. Today specifically, they had an inspection on the twenty-third of April from the DEC, this pretty, you know, comprehensive inspection, and the facility was found to be in satisfactory compliance with the requirements and speech permit. And an additional note, one of the inspectors, it was her first trip down there, and she commented, she can tell that John and his team of operators take great pride in the work that they do. The wastewater treatment plant was clean and very organized, piping equipment were painted for a long life, and the outlook was very clear, looks forward to, and she looks forward to working with us all through the upcoming construction project, so.
Very good.
But they did work.
Nice job, you guys.
Yeah, they do a nice, nice job. Just some updates, Kircher Park, we notified the neighbors as all others, we're starting the sidewalk replacement project today. They started up at the hill near East Main Street, and pulling sidewalks, they got, have it poured almost all the way down past the Harmony House already, and they're going to continue, should be just, you know, a few days while they're doing that. But that's a project that's made possible by the Monroe County Department of Planning and Development. We work, there's a consortium, we all work together for the community development block grants. I think I've said before, I think the Rynick White Grease and the City of Rochester aren't involved in it, but all the other municipalities in Monroe County, and Monroe County Planning and Development manages it all. They get to fill out all the fund stuff for the federal funds and all those requirements and keep track, and keep us in line to make sure that, because there are very specific requirements and things that have to, benchmarks have to be hit, so they're, it's really nice to work with them because we just apply locally, they have a simplified application, and then they take care of all the interface between the federal government and the project, so it works out really good. But we've got sixty-five thousand for the Kircher Park sidewalk and Donovan Street community, or, here to place pipeline, we're going to be re-lining the section of Donovan sewers. We just got notification a few weeks ago, or a couple weeks ago, our request that we put in this year, we tentatively are going to get awarded eighty thousand dollars for next year for the Philip Grove sidewalk, and then a short section on Kircher, or Kittelberger Park. The Philip Grove sidewalk is unique, that's the first one, you guys remember the IMA assignment with the town, and Philip Grove, that area where we're replacing sidewalk crosses the town and village boundary five times. So we're going to be working with the town, we've actually, I see that they're not on this letter because one of us had to be like the lead on the application, so we did it. So I'll work with, they'll send us to the town and work with that over there as well, and the Parks and Rec, not sure who's taking on the sidewalk stuff, but make sure that that's already over next year at this time. Because it still has to go through the, through HUD, and then their final vote on it, I believe, is in September usually, when the county lets votes on it, so. And then we got upcoming Catherine Court, whenever you're doing a mill and daver, replacing the gonders there, and it's going to start another about three weeks. I'm starting to do some crap, but the contractor will be there to put in a new gonders in a few weeks, so. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Clerk's office.
Looks like we're out of time.
Well, I would like to direct your attention up here, as I'm really excited because our deputy clerk, Karen, has revamped our website, and we're very excited because it looks amazing, and she did this on her own. And we went down and took some new pictures, and so please go to the website and check that out. It's very user-friendly now, not as I think I would before, but it's definitely cleaner now, and it looks much better, so we're really excited for that. Yeah, all of these, it's just a lot cleaner and not so busy, so really excited about that.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, you did an amazing job.
Happy we have her.
Yeah.
You too. And we are about to work to, Danielle and I are going to get together to get together for taxes, so that's going to start coming up pretty soon, so. Other than that, keep it moving.
Okay. Okay, I would like to make a public notification that serial bond interest and principal payment, or just interest whichever applies, for bond obtained in two thousand and twelve, we made the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars on May fourteenth, two thousand and
We also, we'll be taking new pictures, because everyone was looking up here. We've taken a couple new ones for the website, so, it'll be up soon.
That's Jerry's high school, bitch.
More of the can.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't tell right now, different person.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Not, then Not, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It is 7:27.
I'll make it. Sorry?
Ellen Bader?
Aye.
Oh, no. Thank you very much for coming this evening. And I hope to see you in two weeks.